Tell Ashley I don't call me. Tell Ashley I don't want to see him. He just come to show off. He's so weak, he think he's so tough. Ashley is not my kind.
La viña, Ashley, ¿qué haces?
Mué pa' que vi ni.
La viña, Ashley, ¿qué haces?
Mué pa' que vi ni.
He just come back from England. He looking well and handsome. La viña, oh, ti.
La viña, se me salió mi amén. La viña, se me salió mi amén. I was working hard in England. To see you smile, I come down. La viña, oh, ti.
Tell Ashley don't call my name. Tell Ashley haven't got no chance. He never write to tell me. Whether he still thinking of me. Ashley don't know he's mine.
He's mine. La viña, Ashley, ¿qué haces?
Mué pa' que vi ni.
La viña, Ashley, ¿qué haces?
Mué pa' que vi ni.
He dressed on it in his suit. His Afro looking so cute. La viña, oh, ti. La viña, la viña, la viña.
Pa' que te mue, cheve mue con ça. C'est où qui la vie mue. Wale asse scoté ou, et chebe la main. Pa' que te mue, cheve mue con ça. C'est où qui la vie mue. Kouté Robert, quitté moi Galéo. Pa' que te mue, cheve mue con ça. C'est où qui la vie mue. La vie mue, où c'est ma talle au mue. Pa' que te mue, cheve mue con ça. C'est où qui la vie mue. Awa bruyère, cheve mue con ça. Pa' que te mue, cheve mue con ça. C'est où qui la vie mue. La vie mue, où c'est ma talle au mue. Pa' que te mue, cheve mue con ça. C'est où qui la vie mue. Ma mue à di bo, wale wè wè wè. Pa' que te mue, cheve mue. Peu de chayou. Pa' que te mue, cheve mue.
Good evening. We will also start in two minutes, so could you please occupy this seat that we have for you. Good evening. Could we stand for the National Anthem, please?
Isle of beauty. Isle of splendor. Isle to all so sweet and fair. All ashorely gaze in wonder at thy gifts so rich and rare. Rivers, valleys, hills and mountains, all these gifts we do exal. Healthy land so like all fountains, giving share that warms the soul. Dominica, God has blessed thee with a climbing night and bright. Pastures green and ploughs of beauty filling with pure delight. And the people, strong and healthy, full of godly red friends fair. May we ever seek to praise thee for these gifts so rich and rare. Come ye forward, sons and daughters of this gem beyond compare. Strive for honor, sons and daughters, do the rites be firm, be fair. Toil with hearts and hands and voices, we must prosper sound the call in which everyone rejoices. All for each and each for all.
In plenty and in time of need, when this field was young, our brave fathers sow the seed from which our pride is sprung. A pride that makes no one turn most of what it have withstood, that binds our hearts from coast to coast, the pride of nationhood. We loyal sons and daughters all do hereby make it known. These fields and hills beyond recall are now our very own. We write our names on history's page with expectations great. Strict guardians of our heritage, firm craftsmen of our fate. The Lord has been the people's guide for past three hundred years. With Him still on the people's side, we have no doubts or fears. Upward and onward we shall go, inspired, exalted, free. And greater will our nation grow in strength and unity. We loyal sons and daughters all do hereby make it known. These fields and hills beyond recall are now our very own. We write our names on history's page with expectations great. Strict guardians of our heritage, firm craftsmen of our fate.
Please remain standing while I invite Monsignor to read us in prayer. Monsignor Vincent Blackett.
Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of Dominica. I'd like to again welcome you to the Blackrock Cultural Centre in this our forty-fifth year of existence. And I hope that we will see you here on many more occasions. There are many other people that I would like to single out and welcome, but I don't want to prolong your programme. However, I would like to welcome the Honourable Ian Douglas. Because there was a time when if I was supposed to be saying the prayer and I couldn't, I could say, Ian, could you go and do that for me? Because when he was at the university, I referred him as my chaplain. And he was there week by week. So I want to specially welcome you, good sir. So let us now bow our heads in prayer. O Holy Spirit, soul of our souls, we adore you, enlighten, guide, strengthen and console us. Tell us what we ought to do and command us to do it. We promise to be submissive in everything you should ask of us and accept all you permit to happen to us. Only show us what is your holy will. Father in heaven, tonight we come together to give you praise and thanks for Dominica. We ask that you will continue to bless that island and its people so that they may grow into a more knitted community, devoted to you and serving the rest of humanity. Father, we pray for this celebration this evening. We ask you to pour forth your spirit upon each person and every person so that together we may build a civilization of love here in our Caribbean region. And all this we ask in the name of Jesus, your son who is Lord forever and ever. Amen.
You can be seated. Let me thank Monsignor Vincent Blackett for this wonderful prayer. And Julie Ann Charles for singing the Dominica National Anthem. And Mr Jonathan Fleming for singing the Barbados National Anthem. The salutations will be done in a manner of introducing the speakers and the officials who are here this evening. So let me start with Dr Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Dominica. Everybody knows Dr Skerritt and his lovely wife, Mrs Skerritt, who is at the front. We have committed ministers with us from Dominica and Barbados. So I'll start to my left, your right. Honourable Ian Douglas, who is the Minister for Trade, Energy and Employment. We have Dr Irvin McIntyre. He's a medical doctor and is the DLP candidate or the candidate for the Dominica Labour Party in the Roseau Valley constituency. And next to him, to his right, is Honourable Reuben Blackmore, Minister for Justice, Immigration and National Security. To my right, we've been introduced to Monsignor Vincent Blackett. And to his right is our next speaker, Miss Mona St Louis, who is the President of the Dominica Association in Barbados. And next to her is Mr Calvin Hawkins. We also have, we're very fortunate in fact to have Honourable Sandra Housband, the Member of Parliament for St James South and Minister in the Ministry of Foreign Trade in Barbados. And Honourable Neil Rowe, reminds me of Rowe who played cricket for the West Indies, Member of Parliament for this area, that's Blackrock, St Michael North West. He is the Parliamentary Secretary in the Ministry of People, Employment and Elder Affairs. We also have His Excellency Martin Charles, Dominica's Ambassador to China. We have Mr Gregory Rivier, who is the DLP candidate for the Mary Court constituency. We have Mrs Missy Henderson from the Office of the Prime Minister. We have other invited guests here with us. We have Dominicans living in Barbados. We have citizens of Barbados with us. We have members of the media. We have people from the police forces in Dominica and Barbados. We have those technicians at the back who are doing a lot of work, have been doing a lot of work and will continue to work hard to ensure that the message is brought far and wide. And of course, ladies and gentlemen. Let me start by saying a few words myself. Since a lot will be said, but I need to say a few words. Let me say that this is indeed an historic occasion and we are all happy to be part of this event. In my introduction of the speakers, I will have cricket as my main theme because we all love cricket, which is a major pillar of our regional integration movement. And let me say that in travelling through the region, I am heartened by the solidarity and support that we brothers and sisters have for each other. This manifests itself not only at times of disaster, but during our celebrations, especially our independence celebrations across the islands. For example, Dominica is in the height of the forty-first independence celebrations. And last weekend, Dominica hosted the annual World Creole Musical Festival, which attracted artists from most of our Caribbean countries. In addition, patrons from these countries, as well as our neighbouring French islands of Martinique and Guadeloupe, grace our shores in very large numbers. This I consider to be integration at its best. Tomorrow, Friday, November first, Dominica will host the OCS Queen Pageant, another event which promotes regional integration. But tonight we're in Barbados to share with you some very important information about developments in our beloved Dominica. And we urge all to pay attention to these developments. So at this point in time, let me invite the President of the Dominica Association in Barbados, Miss Mona St Louis, to welcome you.
Thank you, Mr Master of Ceremonies. Dr the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Dominica and Mrs Skerritt. Other ministers and candidates of Dominica, representative of the Barbados Government, His Excellency Ambassador to Caricom, who is also Master of Ceremonies. The executive members and executive of the Dominica Association of Barbados and DOMSAC. Other citizens of Dominica, Monsignor Father Vincent Blackett, parish priest of O Lady, Queen of the Universe, Members of the Catholic Community here in Blackrock, Barbadians, friends and associates of Dominica, specially invited guests, Mr Calvin Hawkins, Members of the media. Brothers and sisters, good evening. It is indeed a distinct privilege for me to be here this evening and to have the important task of welcoming all of you to this national conversation between you as citizens and friends of Dominica and our beloved Prime Minister, the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, who is supported this evening by his wife, Melissa Skerritt, some members of his cabinet. As Dominicans, we are still in the mood of celebrating our forty-first anniversary of independence as a proud nation. With its people whose loyalty to our homeland extend to the maximum, we can say Dominicans to the bone. The beauty of our country is reflected in our smiles. The ambition of our people is reflected in the socio-economic, family, cultural and religious progress we have made over the years. And our determination is reflected in the resilience we show and how we recover when disastrous hurricanes and other bad experiences confront us. We are indeed a people of class and are proud of who we are and what we aspire to become. We have often heard it said that behind every successful man is a woman. I would like to extend on this to say that at the forefront of every successful country or people is a good leader. This is what we have in our Prime Minister. We want to thank him for his vision and leadership of our country. The Prime Minister has chosen to be here this evening to converse with us and we extend a very warm welcome to him, his wife. his wife, members of his travelling team. I also welcome each of you individually and as proud citizens of Dominica. I expect that our conversation here this evening will be informative, productive and enjoyable. So without further ado, I just want to say to you, sit back, relax, take in all that will be said and done here this evening and live happy that you came. Once again, a warm welcome and blessed evening to all. I thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. St. Louis. And we are already relaxing because the next item is entertainment by Magella Best.
You are the wind beneath my wings. You and you and you. You are the wind beneath my wings. Fly, fly, fly away. You let me fly so high. Fly, fly, so high against the sky. So high I almost touch the sky. Thank you, thank you, thank God for you. Thank you, thank you, thank God for you. Thank you, thank you, thank God for you. The wind beneath my wings. Whales are swaying, someone is praying. Please let us go home to stay. If we hold on together, I know our dreams will never die. Dreams see us through to forever. When clouds roll by for you and I. When we are out there in the dark, we'll dream about the sun. In the dark we'll feel the light warms our hearts. If we hold on together, I know our dreams will never die. And dreams see us through to forever. As high as souls can fly, the clouds are all by for you and I. When you're broken down and tired of living life on a merry-go-round and you can find the fighter, but I see it in you, so we gonna walk it out and move mountains. We gonna walk it out and move mountains. And I'll rise up, I'll rise like the day. I'll rise up in spite of the aches. I'll rise up and I'll do it a thousand times again. And I'll rise up, I'll rise like the day. I'll rise up in spite of the aches. I'll rise up and I'll do it a thousand times again. For you, for you, for you, for you. When the silence isn't quiet and it feels like it's getting harder to breathe and I know you feel like dying, but I promise we'll bring the world to its feet and move mountains. Bring it to its speed and move mountains. And I'll rise up, I'll rise like the day. I'll rise up in spite of the aches. I'll rise up and I'll do it a thousand times again. For you, for you, for you, for you. All we need, all we need is hope and for that we have each other. And for that we have each other. We will rise, we will rise, we will rise up. We will rise. And I'll rise up, I'll rise like the day. I'll rise up in spite of the aches. I'll rise up and I'll do it a thousand times again. And I'll rise up, I'll rise unafraid. I'll rise up in spite of the aches. I'll rise up and I'll do it a thousand times again. For you, for you, for you, for you, for you, for you, for you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Best. Thank you, Ms. Best. Another round of applause. I don't think we will get a better person to relax us this evening. We come to the opening bowler for the Dominican Labour Party and the Government of Dominica. Honorable Ian Douglas has fast become a fast bowler and he doesn't disappoint. He sets the platform for good evening. So it's my pleasure to invite him to the microphone. He's going to talk about the challenges we faced for the last twenty years and how resilient we are. Honorable Ian Douglas.
Thank you very much, Honorable Your Excellency Gregoire, Prime Minister Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt and Mrs. Skerritt, my Cabinet colleague, Honorable Reuben Blackmore, the members of the Cabinet of Barbados who are here with us. Monsignor Blackett, it's great to be back in Blackrock. Fellow candidates who are here with us, candidates on the next general elections in Dominica. Your Excellency Martin Charles. Specially invited guests. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. And let me also take this opportunity to welcome an honorary Dominican who is probably just as popular in Dominica as he is in Barbados, the red plastic bag. Your song continues to be our campaign anthem. I don't know how much you paid for that song, but I don't think that we could ever repay you enough for the kind of impact that that song has, you know, in our election campaign. So we thank you very much. So once again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening, Dominicans who live in Barbados and our Beijing friends who are here with us. It is really a pleasure for me to be here at this forum to address you tonight. And not just being at this forum, but about twenty-five years ago, as a student of the Cave Hill campus, I, like Monsignor Blackett told you, this was my parish and my parish church. And I participated very, very well in the life of the parish. And I actually lived in Blackrock. So this is home for me too, so I'm very happy to be here. And indeed, as Dominicans, you know, we have a lot to thank God for where we are today. When we look at Dominica today and the challenges we have faced along the way, we have every reason, like the Prime Minister always says, God is good and God is good all the time. You know, because from the inception of this government, this Labour Party and in fact, this Labour Party administration, we've had to face many challenges to our economic development trust in Dominica. When we won the elections and came to power in January of two thousand, actually, it was then that we really understood and discovered the magnitude of the economic quagmire that the country was in. The country was literally on the brink of collapse, economic collapse. The country was indebted to every institution nationally, regionally and internationally. In nineteen ninety-nine, our debt to GDP ratio exploded to over a hundred and twenty percent. And for those economic students in the room, you will well understand what that means. That means you were generating a dollar, but you had to find a dollar and twenty cents to actually be able to run the country. And this was as a result of the reckless borrowing that had happened with the government before us between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand. And that government actually pursued policies like, for example, an international airport against international advice and advice from people like the World Bank, who advised them at the time that the proposed international airport was financially unsustainable and potentially a major threat to Dominica's economic stability. And in spite of the warning that they received, the regime actually went to trade and borrowed a hundred and fifty million dollars at the time. And that loan was borrowed in about, let's say about September, August, September of nineteen ninety-nine. And by January of two thousand, when they had left office, that loan was spent on everything else other than the construction of an international airport. else other than the construction of an international airport. And that government used, in fact, some of those monies to pay monthly salaries to public servants, recurrent expenditure. That's how bad things were. They had not been paying the Dominica Social Security for years for public servants. And actually, they made one payment on behalf of the employees at the time to Social Security when they got that money. And the country was so bankrupt, the government was literally in local parlance, what we refer to as broke, that they were forced to implement policies like a hospital user fee. So you had to actually pay when you get to the hospital for medical care. And that, in fact, deprived some of the people who could not afford to pay the user fee for critical medical care. An example of how indebted the country was at the time, we were about $276 million in deficit on the consolidated fund. $87 million overdraft at our national bank, which was actually $37 million over the approved parliamentary limit for the overdraft facility. $53 million worth of unpaid checks were lying in the treasury and could not be issued because there was no money against which those checks could be cashed. $33 million was owed again to the same Dominica Social Security that I was telling you about. And so gratuities and pensions for retiring public officers, in fact, could not be paid because the treasury was empty. Our banana company, which Dominica was really our one for years, for decades, our leading export producer was bananas. And the company which ran the banana industry was $35 million in debt and farmers were living the banana industry during those years in droves. That was how bad things were. All the loans, that government loans at local financial institutions, were $11 million in arrears. And on top of that, public servants, their salaries could not be paid at the end of the month. The only hotel being built by the previous government under our de-mugenia Charles of Blessed Memory, using the Economic Citizenship Program as she had developed, which was maybe one of the only countries in the Caribbean and one of the only countries in the world who had come about with that program, the Economic Citizenship Program, as it was called at the time, and we pursued the construction of a hotel called the Laillou River Hotel at the time in 1993. By 1995, 96, when that other government came to power, that project failed, actually. They could not continue that project because they had messed up the program so much that they could not generate the anticipated revenue using the program. During the period between 95 and 2000, because that government was cash-strapped and bankrupt of ideas as to how to revive the alien economy, they sold the state-owned electricity company, the Dominica-owned, the Dominica Electricity Services Limited. And they sold that company for about 70% less than what it was actually worth its market value at the time. And we have had to face one disaster after another during our term in office. To deal with the state of affairs, a number of hard decisions had to be taken. While trying to grapple with this present state of affairs as if things were not bad enough, back in the early months of the new coalition government, because two parties had come together, two arch-rivals, the Dominica Labour Party and the Freedom Party, had come together to form the coalition government at the time. A minister of government resigned. And to add insult to injury, on the 1st of October 2000, the then sitting Prime Minister, Prime Minister Roosevelt Douglas, died of a sudden heart attack. And while I'm at it, let me recognize my aunt, his sister, who is here with us, Auntie Joyce. It's a pleasure to have you here with us. And so we lost the Prime Minister through a heart attack. And the succeeding Prime Minister, Pierre Charles, had no choice but to engage the IMF, who insisted on a number of structural adjustment measures in an attempt to close the fiscal gap. One of those measures included a 5% stabilization levy, which had to be paid by public servants. And again, on the 6th of January 2004, that then Prime Minister Pierre Charles succumbed to another heart attack and died. So we lost two prime ministers in the same term of office. So we decided we are taking no more chances. The pressure on the country at the time, we go in for the youngest among us. He can't die of a heart attack. And that proved to be one of the most important, critical, and crucial decisions that we have taken as a country in the history of Dominica post and pre-independence. And so we've had to go, you know, we've had to confront one challenge after another. I spoke about the political and economic challenges. And then we've had to deal with the natural challenges, the natural disasters, modern nature was throwing at us. So in 2013, we had something called the Christmas trough, Christmas if trough, which wreaked havoc on our infrastructure and our housing sector. And when if we go even before 2013, we go back to 2010, we had a tropical depression called Tropical Storm Ophelia, which damaged a lot of our infrastructure, especially on the west coast communities like Kinville and Massacre, of which my colleague, Honorable Blackmore, is the parliamentary representative of those areas. And then before we could even recover from those damages we had, like I told you, the Christmas if trough, which caused damage to Roseau, the capital city of Roseau, where the Roseau River, one of the last few live rivers we have flowing through a Caribbean capital city of Roseau, overflowed its banks and caused tremendous flood damage to the city. We then had the dangerous tropical storm Erika in 2015, which devastated a number of east coast villages like Pittit Savan and Delis, including what was becoming our world famous Jungle Bay Hotel at Point Millard. But thanks, like I said, to the visionary Prime Minister and the success now of what was, what had metamorphosized from the Economic Citizenship Program into we did some critical changes to strengthen the program and make it more internationally acceptable. And we rebranded the program and called it the Citizenship by Investment Program. The Jungle Bay has since been relocated and is impressively rebuilt in a place called Monokuma, on a hill overlooking the Sufriya Bay. And this morning, we met with the overseas Dominicans there, and that meeting was absolutely spectacular. And the place itself, whenever you come home, you really should visit the new Jungle Bay. It's absolutely breathtaking. And so, in fact, a recent article, really, by Sarah Clements of the Wall Street Journal says that one of the wilder Caribbean islands, Dominica, has been working to recover from the devastating storms swept across it in 2015 and 2017. The rainforest is green again, classic resorts have been rebuilt and upgraded, and posh new ones are springing up. Longtime favorites Jungle Bay reopened this summer in a new spot overlooking Sufriya Bay at 325 US per night. And there is a new 151-room Cabridge Resort and Sparka Pinsky Resort next to one of the island's three national parks in a place called the Cabridge, close to Portsmoke. Most of you all should know. And incidentally, will have its formal opening on Saturday, this Saturday night, opening its, has its formal opening for the hotel. And so imagine these new and exciting developments happening in a country where just two years ago Hurricane Maria devastated us and causing 225% of our GDP, destroying us, really, and destroying 95% of our housing stock. That is almost unimaginable, really, in economic terms, if you look at it. All of this destruction happened, yet not one public servant was sent home. For months, the country earned not a dollar in revenue, yet not one of our social programs, like the National Employment Program, the Yes We Care Program, not one of our programs was caught. Houses are being renovated, roofs are being covered. About 1,000 homes are being built and constructed and given to citizens free of charge. $86 million was spent to assist families with repairs to their homes, and more than 500 new houses have been built so far. All the major pieces of infrastructure were repaired, and the agricultural sector is recovering remarkably. The first space of the new China Friendship Hospital is complete and operational with advanced pieces of medical equipment, like the Haifu, for some of you all who are familiar with it. College fees at the Dominica State College have been abolished by the Minister of Finance. And close to $60 million have been spent sending students all over the world to pursue university and tertiary education. We are presently witnessing record tourism arrivals with positive word on the construction of our international airport, and I'm sure the Prime Minister will speak to that this evening. The capital city of Roseau and its iconic Roseau River Bank area is being transformed. And the long-anticipated geothermal electricity plant should begin construction early next year. So we are well on our way to really building the first climate-resilient country in the world. New businesses are opening every month. Several new hotels, like the one I spoke about, Kapinski, is opening, like I said, in a few days formally, officially. We have a Marriott coming that is being actually under construction right now. We have a Hilton that is actually under construction and being built right now. And we have old faithfuls like the Jungle Bay that has been completely rebuilt in a new location. We have Secret Bay. Secret Bay is another world famous property that has actually started expanding their rooms, they are adding, if I remember correctly, about 42 villas to their present stock. We have the Fort Young Hotel, which is, Fort Young is actually rebuilding completely, and I am informed that it will actually be rebranded when it's rebuilt. And we have just heard of news recently that one of our other popular properties called the Rosalie Bay Hotel is set to reopen in January. So the future is absolutely and extremely bright in Dominica. All the economic indicators show that the economy will grow by 9% in the next fiscal year, and we are very happy for that also. And in fact, Dominica, we have one of the fastest-growing economies in the subregion today, thanks to the tenacity, the focus, and the discipline of the leadership of the country right now. So, you know, we're very happy to be here to share this good news with you. We are very optimistic that we will continue on this trajectory of growth and development of our beloved country, the nature island of Dominica. And we want you, the Dominican citizens living overseas, to feel just a part of this development as we in Dominica, living at home, do. So once again, I thank you for the courtesy of your attention and for the privilege of being here to address you on the state of play in the Commonwealth of Dominica, your beloved homeland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Douglas. Our next speaker is a middle-order batsman, solid as a rock. He is fast becoming, he is fast becoming a strong candidate, very strong candidate for the Labour Party. And he has captured the imagination of many Dominicans, young and old, rich and poor. I now present to you Dr. Erwin McIntyre.
Honorable Prime Minister, Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt, Mrs. Skerritt, members of Cabinet, Honorable Rayburn Blackmore, and Honorable Ian Douglas, also members of the Barbados Cabinet Parliament as well, fellow candidates, Ambassador Gregoire, His Excellency Martin Charles, Monsignor Vincent Blackett. Distinguished guests, fellow Dominicans gathered here today, viewers and listeners back home, a pleasant good night to everyone. I'm here to just give you a little insight into the health system presently in Dominica. But what we've done is we've realized that to have a cost-effective health system, there must be education. So we actually focusing on prevention through education because we all know ignorance is the greatest poverty. So if we can have all people educated as regards to the preventive measures, it is more sustainable and it is more cost-effective. So that is the approach that the government is taking regarding our health. And this starts at the grassroots level, where we have the community health aides. And these are all part of the Health Promotion Unit within the Ministry of Health. So these are the foot soldiers out there that are educating our people about healthy lifestyles and attitudes so that we can reap benefits in terms of preventing the non-communicable diseases. Now, obviously, the non-communicable diseases, that's hypertension, diabetes, cancer, this is a major issue in all Caribbean countries. And obviously, it impacts our socioeconomics very much in the sense that the amount we are spending regarding controlling and managing these non-communicable diseases is just too much. So the approach is if we can cut down the incidence and prevalence of these diseases, we'd have more money to focus on other things. Now, the Ministry of Health through its Health Promotion Unit has many measures in place where we can educate the people and try to lower the incidence and prevalence of these diseases. So I'll just go through a few of them, such as the Caribbean Wellness Program. That is a day in which an entire, well, it's a day, initially it was a day, but presently it's an entire month, where we engage in promoting physical activity, healthy eating, and elimination of tobacco. Apart from that, we have the Public Officers Wellness Program. This is an initiative from the Prime Minister and all public servants. You are allowed an hour to engage in physical activity and healthy lifestyle practices. And it is compulsory. Not all may do it, but yes, it is compulsory, and we're encouraging all those to do it as well. As regards to NCD policy, that's the non-communicable disease policy. The action plan, which the Commission has decided to focus on childhood obesity, because if we think we can focus on childhood obesity, we stand a better chance of handling the diabetes and the high blood pressure, which is really a burden, a financial burden on the health system. So we are focusing on childhood obesity as one of the preventive measures in handling the non-communicable diseases. Let alone this, we have the Tobacco Control Actions, where taxation on tobacco products introduced is presently at 75%. And Dominica is among the few countries who can realize that percentage of 75% taxation on tobacco products. Besides that, we have many other tobacco reduction programs going on, but this is one of the major ones put in place to help us to fight the non-communicable diseases. We have an alcohol policy. The process has commenced for the development of an action plan. With assistance from PAHO, we should be able to pull this off as well. In terms of our school nutrition policy, we don't only just transport our children to school free of charge, we feed them at school and we feed them healthy meals. So this is all part of the children go home and they tell their parents about the healthy meals they're being fed at school, and all that is through the government program as well. In terms of adolescent and aging policy, yes, this is awaiting approval and will be done. We also have tax implementation on sugar-sweetened beverages at 10%. As a matter of fact, recently, even some schools on their grounds, sweetened beverages are not allowed. I wish it would be national, but that's how we starting from scratch. Because I know if we can cut off these sweetened beverages, you know, kids and we get their taste buds to just move away from the sugar, it's going to be better for them in terms of preventing diabetes and all these other conditions and the complications of diabetes as well. We have a breastfeeding initiative, which is health education continues emphasizing exclusive breastfeeding. And our Princess Margaret Hospital remains a baby-friendly clinic. These are just some of the few measures in terms of promoting health and in terms of preventing these non-communicable diseases. But there are lots of other, well, the thing here is to cut down the incidence and prevalence of these diseases. And through the education process, we can stress about compliance, we can stress about physical activity, just so that the people can get a better idea. Basically, we put in the health of the people in the hands of the people. So that is the way we are approaching it, that if the people can realize they have the responsibility to handle their health, then obviously we'll get better results. But this was at the ground level, so we come now to the primary healthcare level. We have 49 health centers providing different levels of service over the island. And somebody made, I just mentioned And somebody made, I just mentioned the main services that we allow, that we provide at our health centers. That is the dental, maternal child health, non-communicable disease clinics, general clinics, immunization, school health, home visits, which is an important part because quite a few of the elders may not be able to come to the health centers. So the doctors and the nurses go out to their homes to check them, which is a real good way of reaching out to the elders and showing our respect and concern for them as well. We have the environmental health services sector, the pharmacy with free medication at all our health centers, nutritional counseling, health education and health promotion. Our health centers were not spared during Hurricane Maria and we suffered a lot of infrastructure damage. So what the government is doing now is focusing on renovating, repairing and even constructing new structures so that we can face the next five and ten years ahead of us. So that is why we're very pleased that very soon our Margaret Hospital will be built and will be a reality, something that will help the health system in the northeastern district of the country. Apart from that, we have the upgrade of the Portsmouth Hospital and Health Center being undertaken presently. And this is keeping in mind the high-end hotel development taking place in the northern part of the country. So obviously, we're going to have many more stayover visitors and a growth in the local population. So obviously, we need to step up the health services in the north and that is what the Portsmouth Hospital and Health Center will be doing as well. The Lapland Health District was the first to receive a smart health center. By smart, we mean a health center that regardless of a natural disaster, will still have a health center, it's climate resilient as regards, also it has the renewable energy aspect to it. And so a disaster passes and we still have our health centers functional. And so Lapland is the first smart health center, but we're going to do the same thing in Grand Bay and Roseau and Portsmouth as well. And all this has been done and implemented with the assistance from Pahoe. The Montreal Management Corporation, this is the firm that is going to help us to construct twelve of our new health facilities over the island. We have identified six sites where these new health facilities will be built and we should be starting soon. We have another six to identify and we're in the process of identifying those areas. These facilities with accommodation units for staff to facilitate a prompt and provision of care within modernized healthcare limits. In terms of some of the services at the health center, we have first and foremost, all these services are free of charge. So we must always remember that this is what the government is providing to its citizens of the country, free healthcare services at every one of these health centers. And at all these, we have seven major health districts. At all these seven major health districts, we have twenty-four-hour service. We have a doctor and nurses at all these seven health districts providing twenty-four-hour emergency service. Not only this, can you imagine? In our small developing country, even at our health districts, you can get rapid HIV testing at any time. These are things in other parts of the world, not even some urban areas, they have this, let alone in our health districts, we can be having rapid HIV testing in our health districts. We also have the Assist Program. This is a program geared at capturing and monitoring babies and infants who may have been exposed to the Zika virus. We have the Staky Hearing Program, that's a foundation making hearing healthcare services more accessible in over a hundred countries and Dominica is also part of this. Our diabetic retinopathy screening and treatment programs. With the support of the London School of Hygiene and Queen Elizabeth Diamond Jubilee Trust, we have our diabetic retinopathy screening program. We have the home visits, which I mentioned earlier at our health centers, and immunization coverage, which is always above ninety-five percent, thereby protecting our children and our population from potentially life-threatening disease. So we are ninety-five percent and above in terms of immunization coverage. And we have the CHI Program, that is Community Health Aid. And recently in April, we actually graduated twenty-seven of them. These were the foot soldiers I was mentioning that go out into the district and educate our people about healthy lifestyle practices. Now, this category, these foot soldiers, we should really give them a lot of praise because they are the one at the best, they are in the hot sun, going to all the different houses and telling the people what they should do regarding their health. Now, through all of these health promotion activities, prevention measures and services at our health centers, Dominica can boast that it is well on the way in attaining universal health coverage. This is the number one goal of the WHO and we're actually right there. So these are things we should be proud of, then we can be right there on the step of universal health coverage. But with all these milestones, we have to appreciate that fact that this is only possible when we have a government, a Ministry of Health and a staff that can pull this off. So having seen the grassroots level of health and we've done the primary healthcare, now we come to the tertiary healthcare aspect and that is where our new China Dominica Friendship Hospital comes in. And it will be done in phases. As a matter of fact, the first phase has already been handed over to us and the first phase, it includes the Accident and Emergency Department, Administration, the Radiology Department, Laboratory and our Diagnostic Outpatient Department. And this also, our regular outpatient clinics will be taking place at our hospitals with all these diagnostics improvements, obviously is better healthcare and better services to the people of Dominica. And on completion of all of these phases, we will have a state-of-the-art hospital and a hospital that is comparable to anyone in any developed country anywhere in the world. So we're just looking forward to this and most probably within a year or so, our hospital will be complete, all our seven phases will be done and we'd have a really state-of-the-art hospital. This hospital will have Haifu services, that is high intensity focusing ultrasound. There are only two of these in the Caribbean, Dominica is the only other one besides another one. So these services, only two countries in the Caribbean have them, Dominica being one of them at our new hospital. Apart from that, we'd have our MRI and we're going to have two new CT scan machines. These are giving us one sixty slices so we get a better image as compared to the sixty slice machine that we presently have. We have also a PCR machine, that's a polymerase chain reaction machine, which will help us to diagnose conditions. Previously, you'd have to send certain conditions all the way to Carrick in Trinidad and then wait for some time to get a diagnosis. If our PCR machine, it's done right at home, we don't have to send stuff to Trinidad, we do it right at home. And obviously, we'll be having twelve dialysis units in our hospital. So with twelve dialysis in a hospital, there's another aspect of health that comes in and that can be health tourism because lots of people would love to visit the nature island and for some reason or the other, they might be having renal issues and they have to do the dialysis two to three times a week. If we have twelve dialysis, which we're going to have at our new hospital, persons are free to visit the nature island and use our services at our hospital because we also have the persons trained in handling that and we have nephrologists that we have trained recently. So we have the staff, we have the equipment, we have the services. So you can definitely come to the Caribbean, come to Dominica as a tourist and you can still get your dialysis being done as well. So and besides all of this at our hospital, all the other stuff will continue like the mammography, the fluoroscopy, we're going to have two endoscopic rooms as well, our ECG and our echocardiogram rooms, all of this will be part of our new hospital. And all this complements our outpatient departments, which is going on, including our oncology clinic, we have a special department for oncology, that's cancer, and we also have our cardiology clinic as well. And next year, well, our own local cardiologist will be home next year. And our intensive care unit, which is going to be stepped up. I remember ten years ago, our hospital didn't have an intensive care unit. Now we have an intensive care unit. As a matter of fact, it's already touching incident, my neighbor in my village in Mon Prosper, he had a terrible accident and there was trauma to the pelvic region and most probably the chances of survival was about twenty percent and we're thinking, how do we get him across to Matnik or Godloop or somewhere else? And in our intensive care unit, we had the facilities and we had the know-how and we actually pulled this through. This could never have happened ten years ago. So we are very proud that we have such an effective and efficient intensive care unit in our hospital presently, so you can imagine what we're going to have in our new hospital. So these are things we should be proud of. Now, to transition from our Princess Margaret Hospital to our new hospital, we have the Interhealth Canada, that is a firm being contracted to provide consultancy services to assist with the transmission of the services to the new hospital. And to complement this new hospital, the Ministry of Health and Social Services looks forward to the transformation of the overall healthcare services in Dominica. And this is supported by a proposal presented by Pahoe to include legislation whereby the overall management of the services will be held by a health authority inclusive of a board of directors and a CEO. Now, this new administrative structure for the hospital will promote improved efficiency and better accountability, which will translate into a better quality of services for the people of this country. There is also the National Health Insurance Pilot Program, which is being administered by the Dominica Social Security. And five million dollars was provided by the government of Dominica, that proceeds from the CBI program and the amount of people that have benefited from this National Health Insurance Pilot Program. It's remarkable and it's something that we intend to continue and lots of people have been benefiting from it. So this is an excellent idea and let's see how it can continue and even to expand it as a matter of fact. But then your next question is who's going to staff this new hospital? The government thought of this years ago and the government started sending people abroad to get specialized in different specialties. And we sent seventeen persons, young doctors, to get specialized in those fields. And to name a few, we have, some of them are already working at home and many of them will come in home next year as well. So as regards to orthopedics, we have three at home already, these are our own specialists. And in intensive care and accident and emergency, one has already started and the other one to start very soon. We have nephrology has already started, our cardiologist who has completed but is doing a fellowship now in Cuba will be home next year 2020, our urologist will be home next year 2020 and our ENT as well. Family medicine and diabetology and geriatrics are already at home. And then hematology, pathology, gynecology and soon to be trained a vascular surgeon will be here as well. But we will still continue to utilize the Cuban doctors and nurses through the TAC program and for this, we're very, well, we're very grateful to the people and the government of Cuba. They have been helping us tremendously in our health services and no words to thank them, but we were very, very grateful for the assistance from the Cubans in that regard. Now, having brought you through all of this, the primary, the secondary, the tertiary level, this whole comprehensive approach that the government has towards health, this has obviously resulted in some remarkable achievements. And can you imagine after Hurricane Maria, we had absolutely no major outbreak of a communicable disease? Now, this, this, this is very remarkable considering the magnitude of Hurricane Maria. And then let alone Dominica is well on its way to be certified as a nation free of mother-to-child transmission of HIV and syphilis. As a matter of fact, there has been no mother-to-child transmission of HIV and syphilis over the past ten years, which is a remarkable achievement. The number of new cases and prevalence of HIV in Dominica is lowest among the OECD's in HIV. And the government absorbs the full cost of HIV treatment in Dominica and provides services and testing to positive clients free of charge at our HIV AIDS unit. In terms of incidence of tuberculosis, Dominica is one of the lowest among the OECD's countries and the trend of maternal mortality, neonatal mortality and infant mortality is much lower now than it was five years ago. Now, in terms of the services of doctors and nurses per ten thousand people in population, we have one of the best ratios in the OECD's in terms of how many doctors and nurses we have per population. And these are statistics from WHO, so you can always check them out as well. Our immunization coverage for vaccine-preventable diseases is over ninety-five percent over the past ten years and there has not been a single case of a vaccine-preventable disease ever since in the past ten years. And to add to this now, we've taken it a step higher. We have the HPV vaccine. So with the HPV vaccine, what we're doing is targeting the ten, eleven-year-olds so that when they can get this vaccine, because the human papillomavirus, one of the main causes that can lead to cancer of the cervix. So when we introduce this, in the next fifteen, twenty years, we'll be seeing a much lower rate of cervical cancer. But this is how the government is thinking ahead, that we're going to give in our grade six and our first formers those vaccines, which have started already. Obviously, we need to get the permission of parents, so some parents may be a little skeptical about the program, but when we explain to them and they realize the benefits of the program, they're all coming on board slowly but surely. And this is not a cheap vaccine and if our government can be providing that for eleven and twelve-year-old with the intention of cutting down cervical cancer in the future, these are excellent measures, excellent preventive measures and all that is being done free of charge. So we should be proud, where we go through all of this and see what the government has been doing for us. We should not be distracted, the government is playing its part. And in all fairness, when you put together the amount of, well, the magnitude of our natural disasters, our developing country scenario where we don't have that many resources and we have to also deal with the migration of some of our staff and the depletion of our human resource, I think the government has done exceptionally well in health and the future looks bright with our new hospital, with our continued education programs, I think we should all be proud and when you come home, you're going to have a lovely healthcare system that you can rely on. So in a nutshell, that's just what's been happening in health. I think we are very optimistic and we should be proud of what we've done so far. And if we just keep on and healthy practices, healthy lifestyles, we can have a very healthy nation so that we can have a productive nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McIntyre, for outlining some of the major developments in the health sector. And as he said, the improvements are for Dominicans living in Dominica and Dominicans who visit Dominica from time to time. Our next speaker is really a fast bowler. He's so fast that sometimes umpires have trouble deciding whether he has bowled a white ball or good ball. And many times, he's been penalized wrongly for that in my estimation. The Prime Minister refers to him as a formidable parliamentary representative. He says but and that, but I'm just putting it mildly. So it's my pleasure to invite a former police officer, Honorable Rayburn Blackmore, to discuss the safety measures we are putting in place for Dominicans and visitors. Honorable Blackmore.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Prime Minister and his wonderful wife, candidate for the Roseau Central constituency and the next Member of Parliament for the Roseau Central constituency. Cabinet colleague, honorable my body of Ian Douglas, Members of Parliament of the Parliament of Barbados, other distinguished guests of the head table, fellow candidates, Chadon Nick. Good evening. I find we're in an independent celebration and we're very quiet tonight. Your Prime Minister is in house, good evening to you. I have been asked to, to speak on a topic that references Dominica's today, a safe environment, buttressed by enhanced infrastructure and quality of living. It would be therefore useful for me to consider three areas. One, the earlier period from two thousand to two thousand fourteen, and that is pre-tropical storm Erika. Two, the period two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, that's the period of tropical storm Erika. And of course, a period we'll never forget in our life, two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, that's the Hurricane Maria period. Ladies and gentlemen, during the early period, this government being led by the most competent leader in the history of politics in this country, Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt. Honorable Roosevelt, carry Putin together for him. Very quiet. Clearly understood that every economy, notwithstanding its size, that a government has two basic objectives. One, keeping its people safe. And two, providing the basic needs and facilities for its beloved people. Equally important, the Labor Government knew that provisions, my dear friends, that took arm for the sustainable infrastructure is a fundamental prerequisite to achieving the above two objectives I previously stated. Likewise, the Labor Party administration recognizes that that poor infrastructure stood for a major cause for the loss of the quality of life, sickness and ultimately in some cases, death. Can you imagine trying to take a sick person to your hospital and that person is delayed by the problem roads? Ladies and gentlemen, it is on this central premise that your government embarked on a program geared towards enhancing the well-being of our people. The first order of business therefore was to tackle the disrepair of our road network, city fences, airport. You can recall, Honorable Ian Douglas made reference to same-deconnection before Labor. That was, that was not the case at all. And riverbank protection, water supply, river dredging, construction of bridges, and the list goes on and goes on. In tackling this great, this greater burden, the post-it of our road, an audit was undertaken to first find out the nature and magnitude of that problem. The result of that audit, my dear friends, indicated that only eighty kilometers of our three hundred and twenty-one kilometers of our main road was not good but in fair condition. The government at the time set a target of having sixty percent of the country's main road to an excellent condition by the year two thousand fifteen. Ladies and gentlemen, we succeeded in upgrading two hundred and eight kilometers of road of sixty-five percent of our main road to excellent condition by the year two thousand and fourteen. That is significant, my dear friends. That is sixteen kilometers of road over and beyond our two thousand fifteen targets. Ladies and gentlemen, that was not easy. Bear in mind, at that time, we were experiencing the world, global financial meltdown. That period was, in that period, we spent over three hundred and seventy million dollars to building and upgrading our infrastructures. For example, our road link to the airport, our EOLI highway from Roseau connecting the second town, and the list goes on, my dear friends. Those of us who have been to Dominica before that era of Labor can recall that it's comforting and long period of time it took us to traverse from one part of the country to the next. We undertook the upgrading of the Douglas Castle Airport to the tune of a hundred and forty million dollars, which allowed for same-deconnection and a significant feature therefore was night landing. I can recall taking the first flight in the night. I was very scared. And from Antigua to Dominica. And that was a significant advancement for us as a people. Also, access to portable water. Before Labor, only seventy percent of the populace had access to portable water. And we have a target by two thousand twenty that there shall be full access to portable water to all Dominicans. So far, we have ninety-nine percent access to portable water, notwithstanding our very difficult terrain. Only places like those of you who know, who have traversed through a place called Newfoundland, Tefem, et cetera, these are the only areas without portable pipe and water, and that is very significant, my dear friends. Ladies and gentlemen, it's important to note that from two thousand to two thousand fourteen, we took this country from the, from the brink of economic collapse to the next level on a solid path of economic advancement, spending over five hundred and forty million dollars on our physical and economic infrastructure. My dear friends, and that has to be, that we must commend our Prime Minister because most of the money mobilized was through grant funding, and that is significant. Then came this monstrous storm, Erika, in two thousand fifteen, which of course caused a major shift in our development priority in solving our people's problem and hoping to bring relief to our people. And then you heard, Honorable Douglas made reference to what happened to Pitts Tavern and Dubic. Then the focus therefore at the time was to build back better. And the intention was to build a thousand homes to relocate our people of Pitts Tavern and Dubic. Then came this monster hurricane, the worst in the history of man, Hurricane Maria, that devastated this country to the extent to which we were told that Dominica would require twenty years to recover. Honorable Douglas made reference to over two hundred and twenty-six percent of our GDP being eroded. I want to put that into context in a practical perspective. For example, insofar as our productive sector is concerned, a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars US was lost. We're talking about our tourism and our agricultural sector and the list goes on. Our social sector, you heard Dr. McIntyre made reference to the healthcare and education, and four hundred and forty-four million dollars US. And infrastructure, three hundred and six million dollars US. In aggregate, nine hundred and twenty-nine million dollars US. And in EC, two point five billion dollars, my dear friends. That is very significant for any country, even the mighty, greatest economy in the world, the United States, my dear friends. But notwithstanding, Maria struck us. And this country, notwithstanding the fact that we were given twenty years to recover, has turned Maria into an opportunity to take Dominica to the next level, to take Dominica, to make Dominica the first climate resilient country in the world. And our Prime Minister has to be commended and the entire Cabinet members and of course, the people of Dominica for your resolve going forward. So Hurricane Maria struck. We have so far almost relocated the people of Pitts Tavern to a wonderful, wonderful location. Resilient homes, hurricane-proof homes at no cost to them. And that is because of the leadership and the caring of the Labor Party, and that is significant, my dear friends. We are building back better roads, safer roads, better bridges, safer bridges. And we will ensure and with the support of the people of Dominica and the outside world, that Dominica shall become the first climate resilient country in the world. And in short of time, I'm going to cut my contribution short because I understand that it's going to be a long night tonight. And just to say to you, my dear friends, those of you who are living in Barbados, Dominica is the place to be. Dominica is the place to be. With the current leadership and the current team and the plan that we have to move this country forward, the quality of life of every Dominican will be the best in the history of Dominica. I don't want to take from the Prime Minister's contribution, but I believe it's, it's consistent with the whole theme of infrastructure that when we shall construct the international airport, that shall be a game changer for us in Dominica. And Dominica will be the best place in the world and a beacon of hope for the Caribbean and the world by extension. And my final point in terms of transformation in our infrastructure speaks to our energy sector, dual-firmal development. That is going to be a game changer for us in Dominica. We have spent a tremendous amount of time and investment, financial and technical, to get us to the point of the test wells. And very soon, we are now in the tender process for the construction of the small plant. That in itself, in my view, will be a game changer for Dominica. And if you're talking about trying to encourage energy-intensive industries or hotels, stock, et cetera, that would be very important for us to lower the energy costs and to make Dominica a true paradise. My dear friends, I wish you all the best. And I heard Reverend Vincent Bakewell made reference to Mr. Ian Douglas. What I spent three months in Barbados as a police officer when I did my senior detective course. And I can recall going to a Calypso finals where I saw Gabby. I supported Gabby that night in nineteen ninety-nine. But Black Passed Back beat him that night and something is happening here tonight. So thank you very much and one love and a good luck. Continue to best, the best country on earth, Dominica, and the best political force in the history of politics in this country, the Dominica Labor Party. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Blackmore. After those three solid presentations, I think we need some entertainment. So Mr. Jonathan Fleming, I think you're standing by.
Hi, good night, everyone. Once again, just sitting here listening to what has been said and everything placed in context, I think that you have a lot to be thankful for, amen? I think you have a lot to be thankful for. Um, just seeing men stand and speak about how the nation is progressing. If you just think about it, things that you guys went through in Dominica, some nations have not went through and they're still not at a position where you are today. And I think that it is really, yes, you should really commend yourself. Um, of course, you must give thanks to the leader, Mr. Roosevelt. They give praise to you and to the people as well because it takes a complete nation to really build up, you know, and build strength. And the leadership was a very, he's a serious leader, amen? Very good man. So I think that what I want you all to do is just stand and shake up a little bit, loosen up a little bit. You've been sitting for quite some time. I understand that the, um, the leader, he loves Sanak. I heard that he loves Sanak, so we're going to sing a Sanak song. Shake our bones a little bit. Come, everyone, give him a clap. We're going to give him praise today. And thanks for all that he's done for you guys in this season and for the things to come, amen? Let me hear you, amen? All right, all right. Hallelujah. Come and celebrate. Yes. Sing it. You're more than victorious. You are more than victorious. You are more than victorious. You may be seated. You are indeed more than victorious and more than conquerors, my favorite man. And for all the things that you guys are doing in this season, in this time, you will come out on top. You will succeed. You will make it. Amen? Hallelujah. Holy, holy God Almighty. It's a privilege to worship you, Maker of all universe. It's an honor just to stand before It's an honor just to stand before you. Holy, holy God Almighty. It's a privilege to worship you, Maker of all universe. It's an honor just to stand before you. And with grateful heart, I lift my hands to you. Proclaiming, Lord, you reign. With grateful heart, I lift my hands to you. Proclaiming, Lord, you reign. Oh. Great are you, Lord. You're greatly to be praised. You're greatly to be praised. Father, you reign. Great are you, Lord. Greatly to be praised. You're greatly to be praised. Father, you reign. Oh, yes, you do. Oh, yes. Holy, holy God Almighty. It's a privilege to worship you, Maker of all universe. It's an honor just to stand before you. With grateful heart, I lift my hands to you. Proclaiming, Lord, you reign. With grateful heart, I lift my hands to you. Proclaiming, Lord, you reign. With grateful heart, I lift my hands to you. Proclaiming, Lord, you reign. Oh, God, yes. With grateful heart, I lift my hands to you. Proclaiming, Lord, you reign. Great are you, Lord. You're greatly to be praised. You're greatly to be praised. Father, you reign. Great are you, Lord. Greatly to be praised. Greatly to be praised. Father, you reign. Oh, you reign. You reign. You reign. Great are you. Great are you, Lord. 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 Oh. Great are you, Lord. 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 Great are you, Lord, God. Great are you, Lord. 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 No, 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 no. Great are you, Lord. Oh. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jonathan Fleming. Some of us are wondering where we can get a red jacket like that before we go home. You'll contact us. Vehicle registration number MB5568. The vehicle is blocking some other vehicle and somebody is trying to get home at this point in time. So please assist. Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt addressed a gathering in Dominica this morning. And tonight is in Barbados, addressing another gathering. So that tells us how committed Dr. Skerritt is. He's also a cricketer. He walks through the wicked with his bat in his right hand. And then he mesmerized the umpire by taking his guard as a left-hander. Not only the batsman, the umpire would be mesmerized, but the bowler, some bowlers are mesmerized by that. Now, I'm also a bowler, but he has not mesmerized me yet. I'll tell you why. I always play on his side. I never play against him, so he cannot mesmerize me. But he has mesmerized the opposition in Dominica completely. And in Barbados, when you play a good cricket match and you win badly, you win well. You beat them badly, you say you won by an inning. When in Dominica, we say that, but we also say we give them two for one. Do you say that in Barbados? Two for one. So I was thinking about two for one a while ago and I took out the four and I was left with two one, twenty-one. And there are twenty-one constituencies in Dominica. So I made a prediction, which I will keep for the time being. So Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt, Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt, is here to address us on a bright future for Dominica. So it's my greatest pleasure to invite him to the microphone, Dr. Skerritt.
Thank you, thank you very much. I want first of all to recognize the presence of my wife and I want to stand so you can know who she is, so those of you who do not know her. She's also a candidate in the upcoming general elections. And from all predictions, she appears to be well on course to winning that seat. I also want to recognize my cabinet colleagues who were here first. And in a very special way, Honorable Sandra Hosbans, the acting minister of Foreign Affairs of the Government of Barbados. Honorable Neil Rowe, Member of Parliament and Parliamentary Secretary of the Government of Barbados. Ambassador Martin Charles and Ambassador Felix Gregor, Dr. Irving McIntyre, Monsignor Blackett, thank you for praying for us as always. Mr. Calvin Alkins, Mr. Gregory Veer, my friend Red Plastic Bag and invited guests, members of the media, ladies and gentlemen, fellow Dominicans, well wishers of Dominica by their friends and family from Barbados. A pleasant good evening. You know, if I were to live in another Caribbean country, also Dominica, it would be Barbados. It's a wonderful place, a wonderful people. I would like first and foremost to thank the government and people of Barbados for so generously and warmly welcoming and embracing such a significant number of Dominican nationals. Many of you would have migrated to Barbados by choice and others by circumstance. But I'm not aware of a single instance where a Dominican living in Barbados was made to feel unwelcome by authorities or even ordinary citizens of this country. The relationship these two countries share is special. And I would like to ask that my sentiments of admiration and appreciation be conveyed to your hardworking Prime Minister, my dear friend, Honorable Mayor Motley. Indeed, I am told that on hearing of this event this evening, Prime Minister Motley insisted that a government should have a presence here. And I pause to acknowledge and salute the presence of the acting minister of Foreign Affairs, Honorable Sandra Hosbans and the Parliamentary Secretary, Honorable Neil Rowe. I must also place on record from the outset of my remarks here this evening, my absolute admiration and appreciation to Dominicans living in Barbados for your spontaneous and profound response to national crises in Dominica over the years. Particularly the devastation wrought by the most recent Hurricane Maria. I am aware of the personal interventions of members of the Dominica Association here in Barbados and the fact that many of you went way beyond responding to the needs of family and friends. Mr. Calvin Alkins has shared with me many anecdotal moments of you running to the warehouse way past the close of time and pleading for containers to be reopened just so your contribution to the national cause could be recorded. It is your love of country and your unflinching hard work and generosity that have helped to bring us back to near normalcy in record time. And as I referenced, Mr. Calvin Alkins, let me take this opportunity to formally announce the appointment of Mr. Alkins as Dominica's honorary consul in Barbados. Thank you and congratulations. Mr. Alkins emerged from the rubble of our disaster as a reliable friend of Dominica. And during the post Hurricane Maria food and supply crisis, he rendered human service to Dominica in ensuring that the nation was fed during those early days when access to our ports of entry was very difficult and even restricted. Mr. Alkins used his personal resources to guarantee supply and delivery of foodstuffs, never once thinking a second, a second thought to the inherent risk of providing credit to a nation that was not then collecting a single dollar in revenue. And it's true, as I spoke to this gentleman, not knowing him and asking him to procure food for citizens. And he went about doing this, not knowing whether he would get paid by our country. And may the good Lord bless your efforts and we're eternally grateful for this. And I say to Mr. Alkins that Dominicans shall forever be in your debt. And I am indeed honored that you have so readily and willingly agreed to serve and to promote and protect the interests of Dominicans resident in or even just traversing the island of Barbados. So ladies and gentlemen, I welcome this opportunity to be in Barbados to continue the conversation I have been having with Dominicans living at home and abroad. On September 19th of this year, many of you would have witnessed the response and perspective of regional and international personalities during the Thanksgiving concert with respect to the phenomenal progress we have made in Dominica since that dreadful morning of September 19, 2017. I wish to assure you, my dear brothers and sisters, that there was no active Photoshop in anything you saw displayed on the level of damage and destruction that was wrought upon our island. The images were great, but trust me, they still did not reflect or fully convey what those of us at home worked to and endured in the weeks and months that followed. But tonight, thank God, we are back. Our country is in the course of a very exciting and dynamic period of consolidation. Those of us who believe in Dominica know that we are well capable of achieving my government's stated goal of becoming the first climate resilient nation in the world. We have some regional and international partners who have joined forces with us in the rebuilding exercise. I pause here to recognize the presence this evening of leading Barbados industrialist, Mr. Mark Maloney. Mark came to our aid when we were down to the count. He has not wavered. His company has been at the forefront of our national cleanup efforts and they have done a phenomenal job of cleaning up the country and restoring natural water courses for the easy flow of rivers and rainwater to natural and man-made settlements as well as out of sea. Today signals the official end of the 2019 hurricane season. And I think it would be fair to say that we felt more prepared and resilient this year as a result of the national cleanup exercise undertaken by Mr. Maloney and his associates than at any point in the previous ten years. Mark has also been at the forefront of housing construction and the technology he uses has given us the added assurance of knowing that weather resilience is 100% achievable. So my dear people, it is just 60 hours. In just over 60 hours, we celebrate our 41st anniversary of our independence. For our dear Barbadian friends in attendance who may not be aware, Independence Day in Dominica is November 3rd. In Dominica, we have much for which to be thankful and to give praise. First and foremost, we are no longer the Cinderella sibling of the Caribbean family. We are up there with the brightest and the best. As previous speakers would have alluded, we have the widest range of social services to children, the elderly and less fortunate. When it comes to children, we are proud that they are reciprocating our investment in them with admirable performances. It is no secret that last year, Dominica achieved the best CSEC results in the entire Caribbean. And this, I remind you, was in the throes of hurricane recovery when many would not have had access to internet. have had access to internet, electricity, or even reading materials, given the extensive destruction of the hurricane. We have always prided ourselves in the longevity of our people. Time was when we had the highest number of centenarians per square mile in the region. Our care for the elderly has been unflinching. We currently boast the widest array of state-sponsored social programmes, including a monthly grant to persons who would not have contributed to social security in their working years, but who we, as the government, determined should not be allowed to fall through the social cracks. The philosophy of my government has been simple: we are all victims of circumstances. Many of us had no say in where we were born or the social or economic circumstances in which we grew up in Dominica. Many did not work back then, not because they did not want to, but because, again, of circumstance. Many did not reach the highest levels of scholars' achievement, also as a consequence of circumstance. The point I am making here is that in life, we are sometimes dealt a bad hand. But it has been the policy of my government to lift people from bad scenarios to positions of choice, where they can choose the path they wish to tread. And so, I take great homage when people say that I am giving people handouts. I am not doing that. I am giving people a hand up, ladies and gentlemen, from the circumstances where they are. And so we have done this for the elderly, we have done this for the less fortunate, and I'm happy to report this evening that we are doing this for young people as well. And I pause now to acknowledge the presence of our student guild from the Caveville campus of the University of the West Indies. When this government assumed office in 2000, there would have been few students studying at Caveville or any comparable institution of higher learning across the region or the world. Today, there are literally hundreds, inching close to 1,000 state-sponsored Dominicans, studying at universities in the Caribbean, Latin America, North America, Europe, Asia, the Far East, and even on the African continent. Circumstances may have prevented their parents and grandparents from finishing secondary school or attaining a college degree, but we have given every child in Dominica the choice, if they so desire, of attending college at home and university in any of the four corners of the planet Earth. To the students studying here at Caveville, I salute you this evening. I acknowledge that there are few chinks in the system from time to time. Even though we may institute policies and set forth guidelines, it happens far too often for my liking, where simple things like subventions and subsistence reach students way too late. As policymakers, we have no way of knowing this unless and until someone highlights it. But I wish to assure you this evening that your education in Barbados is catered for by the government of Dominica. We budget the funds, we source the funds, we authorise the funds, and there is no excuse for funds not reaching you on time and in time. I have made it clear to the authorities in Dominica that I will be taking a very dim view of the performance of anyone who drops the ball as it relates to delivery of vital funds and other amenities that we have determined should be made available to students on a scheduled and reliable basis. So ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I do not wish to be very long in my remarks this evening, as I would like the opportunity to hear from you and address matters of concern to you as Dominicans living in Barbados, both with a keen eye and ear to what's happening in our country. Of course, as you know, January elections are constitutionally due in a matter of months, and I have announced publicly they will be held in what is now under 85 days. But I will say to you, I am not here to promote the reelection of my party. I am here to accung to you on our stewardship. I believe the resident Dominican population in Barbados is large enough and influential enough for my ministers and I to include Barbados in our scheduled listing of places where we trek ever so often to meet and interact with citizens. I wish to say to you this evening that Dominica, to my mind, is on the right track and is moving in the right direction. We are not perfect, we have made mistakes, but I wish to place our record of accomplishments on the table for all to examine and evaluate. This Labor Party government has performed, it has delivered, it has a clear vision and a plan for taking our country, Dominica, forward. Currently, we have several major infrastructural projects underway or about to commence. These span every gamut of social and infrastructural development in the country. No matter the sector, something is happening right now in Dominica. Something is happening, Red Plastic Bag. New housing developments across Dominica. The new CBI-funded five-star hotels, and as my colleague indicated, the Kempinski 160 rooms will be opened officially on Saturday of this week. We have the Anichi Marriott Resort and Spa, 143 rooms under construction. The Tranquility Hilton Beach Resort, 75 rooms currently under construction. The Jungle Bay has opened, an additional 55 villas will be made available by the end of December 2019. The Secret Bay Hotel is currently expanding with 39 additional villas. The Geothermal Project is well on stream and will go to tender very soon to commence work in the first quarter of 2020. The new Dominica China Friendship Hospital is well on its way with the first phase already handed over to the government. The new Marriott Health District Hospital, several health centres across Dominica. The new cruise ship village and cargo port will be constructed to improve and increase the number of cruise passengers into our country. The roads enhancement project is under construction, the construction of many roads and bridges across the country. Agriculture is being revolutionised to introduce new techniques, new crops, and the use of technology on the farms. And we are now finalising agreements for a 100-room hotel adjacent to the Kempinski at the Carports, an additional 130-room Marriott branded hotel on the existing site of the Public Works Corporation. And I go home tomorrow to the groundbreaking ceremony for a 70-room, 70-villa resort in Loda in a place called Providence that will be financed by the CBI project. And, you know, it is written in scripture, it says, "Knock and the door shall be open unto you; seek and you shall find." And you know, I have been knocking on the doors of some friends for the financing of the international airport, but I kept knocking and the door wasn't opening, but I live by faith. I do not subscribe to the doctrine of St Thomas, I live by faith. And you know, my dear brothers and sisters, that door has opened, and we now have confirmation of the complete financing of the international airport for Dominica. This week, this week I received a special envoy from a friendly nation who came to transmit that message to me from the leadership of that country. And when a country of that magnitude gives you its commitment, that is money that is even more valuable in any bank anywhere in the world. And so I look forward to the commencement of the construction of international airport in the year 2020, the year of our Lord, and we give God thanks and praise for that. So my dear brothers and sisters, on our current trend, we shall not only rebuild, but we shall build back much better than before, and indeed, much better than many in the region and the hemisphere. The government which I have the honour to lead has a network of contacts and friends that are the envy of many a nation in the region. So do not assume that my friends are or will be anybody else's friends. I cannot speak for my friends, but I'm saying to you, it should not be assumed that friendship is transferable. That is not the way of the world in 2019, and it certainly will not be the way of the world in 2020 or 2021. In 2019, 2020, I am bringing my own friends to the party, and persons who wish to challenge me should do the same. Name your friends, name your allies, and name your finances. Tell us where you will get the money from to build Dominica. So let us not get confused, ladies and gentlemen. Dominica will not progress anywhere in a hurry without the support of friends in high places. Let us embrace that reality this evening. This is not a talk of fun, this is a serious business, and we cannot gamble with the future of Dominica at this crucial point in its development. So tonight, I invite you to participate fully in this session, but equally important, I invite you to reflect upon the strides we have made and the challenges we yet confront, and to recognise that each of you have a sacred role to play in preserving and promoting the future social, economic, and infrastructural development of our beloved island home, Dominica. I urge you to take this responsibility very seriously and to understand that no matter where you live, no matter where you intend to retire, your umbilical cord shall always be connected to Dominica. Because Dominica is home, and no matter where you go and how comfortable you become, there will always be only one place that you can truly call home, and for all of us, that is the Commonwealth of Dominica. So I am very happy to interact with you, my dear brothers and sisters, and to say to you that this Hurricane Maria, she thought that you would destroy Dominica forever. But you know, they say in every disappointment, there is a blessing in disguise, and what we have done is that we have taken this disappointment and turned it into a blessing, and we're seeking to build a new Dominica, a resilient Dominica, a Dominica that we all can be proud of, a Dominica that will have many more opportunities for young people and citizens alike. So Dominica, my friends, is ours to love, to cherish, and to do goodbye. And I urge you to all subscribe to this very important responsibility. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Thank you, Honourable Prime Minister. We have come to the question and answer period, I think we have about 30 minutes for that. Normally, we take five questions and then we answer those questions. So we don't answer the first one, we take five and we answer the questions. You can address your question to any member of the head table. So who is the first, or who's the opening batsman this evening from your side? Red Plastic Bag. Something is happening. You up? Okay. So, as I said, we have half an hour, so we can try to maximise the use of our time. If there are no questions, we will be happy, well, not happy, but, okay. There you are. We have two microphones and that's in the middle, so you can use those.
Okay, good evening to everybody here tonight. I have two questions. My first question is about, I heard a lot about infrastructural development in Dominica, but to me personally, all these housing developments does not really develop our economy per se. We need ways that we can come to Dominica and I can feel comfortable at the end of the month and I have substantial salaries and those things. So one of my questions is, is there a plan in place to, one, increase the, what's her name again? The minimum wage from $4.05, or $4.50? So is there a plan in place for that and also for the young professionals who are developing at UE, is there a plan in place to provide sustainable jobs for the students after they leave UE? Because while I do admire the National Employment Programme, to be honest, it's not very sustainable in the long run. So are there plans in place to present more sustainable jobs for our young professionals?
Yes, good evening. My name is Buddy Larria. I am not a Dominican, but after listening to the head table, I think I might consider applying for citizenship. And the reason for this is because in 1978, when Dominica became an independent country, I came back from England and I sowed a seed in Barbados, and that seed is about to grow into a mature tree with fruits in 2020. It is called Vision 2020 Regathering. My question to Dr McIntyre, you spoke eloquently about the health. One particular aspect of health I did not hear you make reference to is mental health. And I understand that if the mind is not well, the whole body is unwell. The Prime Minister makes reference to the circumstances. We are now in the 400th anniversary of we as a people being ripped from Africa and put through what we all know is a journey. So, Mr, Dr Garrett, I am writing to all the Prime Ministers or all the heads of state in the Caribbean, and after I heard that you was going to be here, I decided that I would hand-deliver your letter to you. So at some point, I would like the opportunity to do that, but all heads of government will be receiving a copy of this. But I thank you for the vision that you have for Dominica and by extension, the Caribbean and the wider world. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Natalia Perch. I'm a Dominican living in Barbados for the past 13 years. PM, you made reference to the international airport in Dominica. If I remember correctly, this is something that has been ongoing for the past 15 years. My question is, what has hindered us from starting the process? My question is, what has hindered us from starting the process? And can we look forward to that in the next five years if the Labour Party is successful? My other question too is, I visited Dominica in May, and I went to the Social Security Office to get my ID done. Now, I am a Bayesian citizen, a Barbadian citizen, and my ID is more or less laminated. You know, not to knock my Barbados government, but our ID in Dominica is very nice. It is on par with the US ID. My question is, what is hindering us from giving people voter ID cards? If I could get my ID card at Dominica Social Security in, what, ten minutes, and very nicely done, what has stopped us from issuing these voter ID cards? Thank you.
Good evening to all. My question was along the similar line of our last statement. I think now a discussion is taking place in Dominica reelection reform. I want to know what is the government's position on election reform? And is that going to take place before the next election?
Let me go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Good night to everyone. My name is Janelle, and I'm from the Grandpa, Monjon constituency. My main concern is what's the future for agriculture in Dominica? I am an agriculturist, and I would really love to come back home, do farming, and ensure that our people eat healthy. Back in Dominica, I find that the fruits and vegetables are very expensive, much more expensive than Barbados, who import most of their items. So I really want to know what is in place for agriculture, and for somewhere like Dominica, the natural island, our items should not be so expensive. I believe that the government should really look into developing our agricultural sector. Back in the day, agriculture was king. Banana was king. But right now, it's, I mean, a pound of cucumber is five dollars. Everything starts at five dollars in the market, right? So this is something that needs to be addressed. If we're looking at ensuring that young people go back into agriculture, because I know from someone who is hands-on and who does farming, I know that there is a huge market, there is a lot of profits out there. Doing agriculture could be a livelihood. It's not all about, it's more than farming, it's more than just doing the basics, right? There's a lot of technology in agriculture. So I would really, really like the government to focus on agriculture and youth more. More should be placed, the same energy that is being put towards housing. I believe that the government should focus on agriculture and bring it where it's supposed to be. I thank you.
Well, I will start with the last question, agriculture. I would ask you to really check your, the source of your information where agriculture is concerned about Dominica. Because I can tell you, my dear, agriculture is alive and well in Dominica. I mean, and a country that was impacted by the hurricane, where ninety percent of your crops were completely destroyed and so on, we are exporting tremendous sums of agricultural produce throughout the Caribbean, especially enough of Dominica. Tremendous sums of agriculture. I can tell you, I am a farmer myself, and I grow a lot of things. Back in the days, you talk about the eighties and nineties, when banana was king, but as a monocrop economy, a monocrop economy, and we never sought to diversify the economy back when banana was king. We have now a very diversified agricultural programme in Dominica. And there's also this misinformation about youth not involved in agriculture. I can tell you, I go across Dominica to many farms across Dominica, and every village and every clan in Dominica. And there are hundreds of young people, including women. If you go to a place called Dalis, you have a totem of farmers, all women. You go to a place called Mon Prosper on the Robinson Estate, you have women who are vegetable farmers. Ninety percent of them, of the farmers there in Mon Prosper are women. Across the length from Befo Dominica, there are a lot of young people. And what is strikingly exciting now in this new era is that I have seen a lot of young professionals getting involved in agriculture. So people are now using agriculture as a second source of revenue. In my own little humble way, as a subsistence farmer, I make a good little money in agriculture every year. And agriculture has money, my friend. And so what we need in Dominica, I believe, is that those who are trained in agriculture and so forth, we have to translate this theory into practice, and we start growing food, and not only treat the green agriculture as a textbook thing, but to grow food. But agriculture is going up, and we have a plan to build more resilience in agriculture that is supported by both our local resources and a considerable amount of funds, some sixty-seven million dollars from the World Bank, that is invested directly in agriculture to build greater capacity, to grow more resilient crops, to use more technology on the farms. And also, we have a separate agreement with the Government of China, Agricultural Technical Mission, where that, under this agreement, it provides a whole array of support, farm support to farmers. So I invite you, my darling, to come and join me in growing food and the Commonwealth of Dominica, because there are huge opportunities for that. And if you have the natural background for it, you have the love for the soil, and you have the professional qualifications, you are well placed to revolutionize and to make huge sums of money in agriculture in Dominica. And of course, with the hotels opening and more consumption taking place, we have to be in a position to provide, to supply the hotels and the restaurants with high-quality agricultural produce. So agriculture is great. As a matter of fact, if you go to the parliament, you will see in the hands that I always question the statistics prepared by the statistical department on agriculture. I am satisfied that the economy is not properly capturing the contribution of agriculture to the GDP. I believe it is much higher than it is. Because you know, you call them higgers in St. Vincent and Barbados, you call them the hucksters. They never want to tell you how much they sell, because they believe that you're going to tax them or something. But every single day of the year, we have agricultural produce leaving Dominica in large quantities, to the point where sometimes we have to address the issue of supply in some of the crops. And so we have rarely changed things. You will say you're from Monjon, right? Back in the days in Monjon, where you grow yams, yams used to be seasonal back in the days. Now you grow yams year-round, because of a new farm practice and farm technology that we're using in the growing of yams. Ginger used to be seasonal. Now you can get ginger year-round. Dashin' used to be seasonal. Now we can produce dashin' year-round in Monjon or in Visiwick, where you're from. And so farmers are able to grow these crops and benefit throughout the year and so on. But agriculture is on its way, and this is why myself personally, as somebody who has always been involved in agriculture, I believe that we have to promote agriculture. Agriculture will never lose its prominence where this government is concerned, and in terms of resources and policy direction. So agriculture is, well, maybe only person who misses in agriculture, because yourself, darling. My flight is eight o'clock tomorrow morning, and I am more than willing to give you a space on the plane than me. Thank you. In respect to voter ID cards and so forth, well, we are promoting a national ID card, instead of a voter ID card. I will say to you, my friend, that in two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen, after we were devastated by Tropical Storm Erika, where I had to relocate two communities because of the disaster, I still went ahead and gave the Electoral Commission over six million dollars to acquire the technology to allow it to be in a position to issue the national ID, the voter ID, national ID card, sorry. We provided the Electoral Commission with the staff it requested, and all of the other supporting resources it requested of the government. As a matter of fact, when they sent the request to me through the President, I even said to them that their request was too low, because I needed to ensure that they had all of the resources to effectively implement the issuance of a national ID card for the purposes of voting. Because at the time, they had a chief elections officer who came from the audit department, so he looked at things purely from an auditing, accounting standpoint. And so he was trying to be frugal. And I provided the commission with more resources than they had requested of the executive of the government. You know, like me, there are three branches of government. There's the executive, the legislature, and the judiciary. And as far as the executive, which is the cabinet is concerned, we had done all what we needed to do, including the preparation of the legislation, the amendments to the Electors Act, to give the Electoral Commission the legal authority. Because as it stands now, the Electoral Commission does not have the legislative authority to issue national ID cards. And so we sought to go to parliament on two separate occasions. The first time we went to parliament, there was a mob outside of the parliament, and to the point where they were prepared to storm the parliament. And I, who is always a maker of peace and a promoter of peace, I decided to withdraw the bills on the other people, and to allow for there to be further consultation with stakeholders across the country. We wrote to the opposition in Dominica, for example, and we said to them, look, these are the amendments. Tell us which of these clauses you don't agree with, and which you agree with, so that we can have a discussion, a sensible discussion in the matter. They are here to submit to us that which they do not agree with, and that which they agree with. We sought to go back to the parliament a second time, because we removed one or two clauses in the amendments, and the same thing happened. You know, there are some people in politics who sometimes, when they're opposition, they say what they want, they agitate on things, but sometimes they don't want it, you know? They say they want it, when you try to give it to them, they don't want it. So the only people who have been the stumbling block in the issuance of national ID cards in Dominica for the purposes of voting is the opposition. And as a matter of fact, I will say publicly, as I've said before, the reform, I would love it. I would love for it to be in effect. I would love for it to be in effect. I am not opposed to, we are fully in support of all of the measures required to have electoral reform. But notwithstanding these changes, we have always had free and fair elections in Dominica. We have had eight elections since we attained independence forty-one years ago. And there's every assurance that whenever these elections are called, we will have free and fair elections that will allow everybody who is on the voters' list to vote in Dominica, and to protect his constitutional right to sodo. So don't believe, my friend, that this government led by Roosevelt Garrett is opposed to electoral reform. Roosevelt Garrett is in total and absolute support of electoral reform. But we have to take the running of a country seriously. We cannot play games with voters, we cannot play games with citizens, and we cannot play games with the people of our country. And we have to be, we have to be serious about things. And if we say we want something, why can't we sit down as seasoned and respectful, and respectable leaders of the country? And say, okay, well, let us go through the amendments, let us set aside what we agree on, so there's no argument there, and let us put what we do not agree on on one side, and negotiate them, discuss them. But that's not what they're doing. You know, when people know they're going to lose, they will try to bring something so that when they lose, they have a reason why they lose. And they're going to lose big time, I trust you man. And that's what it is. So I have done, as Minister of Finance and Prime Minister, all what I have the law, the authority of the law to do. That is to make the monies available, that is to prepare the amendments to the legislation and take it to parliament. It is left to the legislature to give the Electoral Commission the legal authority to do so. And since two thousand sixteen, we gave them the resources, mere weeks after Tropical Storm Erika, when people were homeless, when communities were cut off from each other, when farmers had no access to their farms, I still went, and I think if one of them, I think that was a irresponsible decision on my part to have done. I should have spent this money on the people of Dominica to build their homes for them, and to help the farmers in their farms. But we felt that it was an important part of the process of good governance and accountability, and we decided to make the resources available, notwithstanding the challenges which we were confronted. So these are the facts, my friend, and these are indisputable facts. So I have dealt with the voter ID cards and the electoral reform which the gentleman has requested. Now, on the issue of international airport, we have always agreed as a party that Dominica needs an international airport. What we have always said to the country is, how do we go about financing it? And you will agree more than me, or equally so, that Dominica then and now cannot afford to build an airport internationally by itself, with its own resources, with a very small taxpaying base in our country. Where are you going to get the money to build it? How much can you borrow to build an international airport? And this is why we have approached friendly governments. And this is why, the first time in our history, outside of when David Richard Charles was in office, and the American Corps of Engineers had agreed to do the earth movement for her, that is the only other time when we have had a concrete offer of assistance to finance international airport. But there has been progress, a progressive move. You recall that when we came into office, Dominicans couldn't fly into Dominica when it gets dark. We had to bring it in Dominica, the night landing in Dominica. And so the next progressive move, having built these hotels, you now have capacity, you now have people to bring in, we're moving towards the international airport. And we now have firm commitments to build international airports. And even before we had the firm commitments, you know, I started, I set up an international airport fund, utilizing the citizens' investment resources. And every month, we were setting aside five million US dollars. And at the time of the hurricane, we had a hundred and sixty million dollars in the account towards the international airport fund. So if you want to understand my seriousness about the airport, look at the actions that I have taken progressively over the years. And this talk about, oh, Garrett has been here for nineteen days, and now he's been in the international airport, that's a nonsensical discussion. The fact is, we never had it, and I give you the assurance, by the grace of God, Roosevelt Garrett will bring it for Dominica. In respect to, I am not sure which area of study, my dear friend, that you engage in at the University of Western East. But if you look at the SDGs, the Sustainable Development Goals set up by the United Nations, and if you look at anything relating to poverty, and look at the indices and indicators of poverty, you will recognize that access to homes, sanitation, electricity are all critical components and indicators of addressing the issue of poverty. So be careful, do not downplay the importance of housing, especially housing for the less fortunate, those who by circumstance have found themselves in squaller conditions, and without the help of a government, will never be in a position to have a decent home for themselves. And in every disaster, the poor and the vulnerable are always the ones who feel the brunt of a disaster. And what do we, what do you recommend I do as a Prime Minister? Do I tell them, go home and pray, and read the Quran, pray, and to roll the rosary? Or do I go out there and fetch resources and provide housing to them, to give them a level of comfort, and to address a fundamental issue that contributes to poverty, access to housing, access to sanitation, access to water, access to electricity? And so housing is a critical component. I could have all of the hotels in Dominica that we want, and all of the wonderful farms, but where are you going to sleep at the night, when the night comes, as the employee of the hotel? How are you going to bathe and wash your hands? What toilet are you going to use when you go home? And, and, and how are your children gonna be able to grow and study and do well? So housing is a critical component. Especially, my friend, especially after this hurricane. Where ninety percent of your homes were impacted. That became, that was catapulted as priority number one. And so the government had to focus heavily on housing the nation. And this is what we have been doing. And I think that we have done a phenomenal job in addressing the housing situation. We have a long way to go because our goal is to build five thousand resilient homes for citizens. We are well on our way to doing that, but it's still some way to go. So housing is very, very critical. And there are some of us who are blessed and who can go to the banks and get a loan, a mortgage to build our homes. But there are many families across the world, across the world, Dominica included, who will never be able, even able to open the door to the financial institution, for them to speak to a loans officer. And we have to provide for them. Okay? The issue of the increase in minimum wage, there is no employer in Dominica, my friend. None who pays this minimum wage as prescribed there in law. Nobody pays that. Nobody pays that whatsoever. In the government system, anybody who works for forty hours a week, you get no less than one thousand dollars a month. Nobody gets paid this minimum wage in Dominica. That is, you know, sometimes people use these things to play in the minds of, of people. And say, well, we should have minimum wage increase. So what we have done, and let's mark you, the, the, we did the, when was it, Blackmore, we made the amendments, two thousand and eight or two thousand and ten? Eight. The last time we made some changes to the minimum wage, two thousand and eight. But the time before that was in the eighties. And in Dominica, as compared to other countries, we have categories. Some countries, they have a flat rate across the board. We have categories. And so what we have done, as announced in the parliament, is that, as required by law, we have appointed the, a committee that is mandated by law to review the minimum wage. So they are now deliberating. They are consulting stakeholders. And we await their recommendations to determine at what level you should peg the new minimum wage, if at all. What increases you should provide to them and so on. So we certainly looking at the minimum wage and see whether, what kind of changes we need, what kind of, what kind of increases we need, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the issue of jobs and so forth. We are seeking to have investments. Because you talk about infrastructure, infrastructure is important. The Chinese tell you, the road to development erodes. So you have to have the infrastructure to sustain economic activity. And this is why we have invested heavily on infrastructure, because if people cannot get to you, or you can't get from one community to the other, your businesses cannot get to the, to the markets, how are you gonna create jobs? So we've had to invest heavily on the infrastructure. And those of us who knew where Dominica was when this government came into office in two thousand, you recognize that you had to spend serious monies on improving the infrastructure of Dominica. And we have been focusing heavily on, on expanding the tourism and the hospitality industry by constructing hotels, using our own policy initiatives, financing this hotel construction, utilizing the citizens by investment program. And so to create more sustainable jobs. In agriculture, we invest in heaven in agriculture. And not only the archaic type of agriculture, the traditional type of agriculture, but modern agriculture utilizing technology on the farm. Geothermal and moving to a more green economy is an opportunity for us to create sustainable jobs in the economy. Because once you have a reduction in the cost of energy, then you will have more money to invest. The private sector has more money to, to, to invest back into their businesses, creating more jobs and so on. But I say to Dominicans that in this new era, we should not be looking to government to create a job for us because of our access to higher education. Our access to higher education is sufficiently an empowered tool for us to create opportunities for ourselves. Because I see non-Dominicans come to Dominica, and in quick time, they have a big home. In quick time, they are employers. Within, within a matter of a couple of years. And I think that we need to be more entrepreneurial in nature and to see what is it, how can I use my knowledge I have acquired at university in my new dispensation to create a job? So you don't, if you are a lawyer, you don't have to work in the agent's office to, to get a, to get a salary, no. There are, people believe that once you're a lawyer, you must go to court. Not all lawyers have to go to court. You can, you can use your legal knowledge and work somewhere else and, 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 and create a new opportunity for yourself. You, you, so, so we have to start looking within our abilities and look at what the country, the opportunities in the country, and see how we can take advantage of it. And, and, and so we don't have to rely on the government. The government is there to do the facilitation. The government is there to provide the, the policies, the incentives. And how do we take advantage of the policies? How do we take advantage of the, of the incentives? And create wealth for ourselves, create employment for ourselves, take advantage of the opportunities? This government has gone even beyond just the policies and so on by actually making funds available at the development banks for manufacturing at two percent interest. For tourism development at two percent interest. For agriculture at two percent interest. Monies from the government itself pass on to the development bank to lend to citizens of the country. And when, if you are as a private sector person, I am just a village politician, I'm no business person. But if you get in two percent interest loans, I believe that there are many business people who would run for this and line up to take advantage of this. Because the interest rates that you would get from the commercial banks can be prohibitive for many people who want to start a business. And so how do we take advantage of the policies, the incentives, and the funds available? And the funds available to create wealth for ourselves? And we as university graduates, we have to be the ones leading that, that new approach to life. Why is it that somebody who did not complete primary school, who is unable to read and write, is a businessman? He, he, he's a businessman creating jobs for himself and for others. And so if we have the access to knowledge and we have access to technology, the question is, why are we not creating wealth for ourselves? And I think we are waiting for somebody to do it for us, rather than we doing it ourselves and taking advantage of the opportunities that are available. And so this is why I want to challenge young people, that we have to have a new dispensation in our thinking. And to, if we want to see change, we must be the change agents of ourselves. We must have a new approach to life, a new perspective, and how do we see our country, and what do we expect our country to provide for us? And if the country is providing you with an education and, and, and a tool that is empowering you, how do you take advantage of this? Because I say to people, you must not only see a university degree as a diploma that you put on your wall nicely framed in some nice local wood or mahogany or something. It must be seen as an investment. And if you put money in something, you should get money out of it. And if you spend three hundred thousand dollars on a university degree, how much are you gonna make out of this? I would love to have much more time to engage you and others in that discussion, so we can together find a pathway to greater success and opportunities for, for, for you and, and, and so forth. The other thing too, I want to say, where jobs are concerned, now while Dominica may not be among the highest paying salaries in the Caribbean and the world, but you must not only look at one variable. Free access to healthcare. The state pays for that, but you get it free. Free access to education. You get it free where the state pays for that. That's keeping money in your pocket. What do you do that money that the government has allowed you to keep in your pocket? The provision of housing for our people. So there are, and of course, a number of social services that many countries don't have. And the low tax rates, for example. So it's not only salary that one has to look at, but you also have to look at other benefits which you enjoy that in other places, you have to use your salary to pay for it. You know how many young boys and young girls who are unable to be at university in United States of America? Because they don't have access to a student loan? And the last time I saw this, I think it is said that students owe, I believe, one point two or one point three trillion dollars in student loans in America. And I believe about forty percent of that are, are in, are in the non-performing category. And in Dominica, for example, all of our students have free access to community college. In America, a student has to pay eight thousand US dollars a year to go to the same community college. So when we are comparing things, we have to put the, all of the variables on the table and then compare like to like. But we cannot compare an orange to an apple and, and come to a conclusion. No. One will always remain an orange and one will always remain an apple. And if you mixed up, you were a fruit salad. And you, you know, so they will never be, be the same, my friend. I think I have addressed the, the points that you have raised. But again, you know, I will be the first to admit, as I've always admitted, that I do not have, and neither do my team have, all of the ideas on how to run the country. And I would love to receive recommendations from you in your various areas of discipline. And say, look, Scott, I believe you should do the following. And if you do the following, you will get the following results and so forth. So I would love to engage in agriculture. I'd love to engage on electoral reform. I'd love to engage you on housing. I'd love to engage you on creating great opportunities for, for, for us in Dominica and so forth. But so, so we can have a sensible and informed decision. Because at the end of the day, all ideas must contend, and all ideas will contend for the greater good of all of us in Dominica. Thank you.
Okay, it's getting late. We had a long day, especially the prime minister. So I think we can wrap up. Before I call Calvin, I have an announcement. On Sunday, the third of November, twenty nineteen, the Dominican Association of Barbados celebrates the forty-first anniversary of Dominica's independence with a church service at our Lady Queen of the Universal Catholic Church at nine AM, followed immediately by some annual brunch right here at the community center. The executive of DAB invites all Dominicans to this annual affair. Everything Dominican will be served. And it, the announcement ends by saying, miss it and blame yourself. So with this announcement, it's my pleasure to invite the new honorable honorary council for Dominica in Barbados, Honorable Calvin Hawkins. To move a vote of thanks.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, it was my pleasure being your, your host. And tonight, we just wanted to give God thanks. Give God thanks for what he has done in Dominica in terms of restoration, in terms of renewal. Some people say that I am more Caribbean than anything because I love the Karanago people. And Waikubali is my home. Tonight, we would like to thank the master of ceremony, Mr. Felix Gregor. We want to thank the Honorable Prime Minister, Dr. Roosevelt Scott. We want to thank Julian Charles, Jonathan Fleming, Mansour Vincent Blackett, Mona St. Louis, Magella Best, the Honorable Ian Douglas, the Honorable Dr. Mack, the Honorable Ray Born Blackmore, the Honorable Sandra Husbands, the Honorable Mr. Neil Rowe, Ambassador Martin Charles, Ambassador Stetson Wiltshire. And most of all, I want to thank all of you for taking the time out to welcome the Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Dominica and his lovely wife and all the Camila colleagues. Barbados and Dominica have always shared a close bond. And tonight, we have seen the strength of that connection again for well over a decade long before even thinking about tonight. And being bestowed the privilege of being the Dominican honorary council to Barbados. I had a passion for the development of the natural. I speak for all Barbadians, as we would say Belgians, when I say that Dominica and its people have a special place in our hearts. Dominica has become my home away from home. And many Belgians use Dominica also as their home away from home. I met Dominicans who say that, you know, Barbados is so sweet, it's so nice. Our countries might just be three hundred and sixteen kilometers apart, but you know what? We are two peas in a pod. That's why it's encouraging to see many so passionate individuals from both islands gathered together tonight and participating in a serious discussion about ongoing developments in Dominica. I want to assure the people of Dominica that Barbados will continue to be there whenever you need us. Just like we were in recent times of disaster. Moving forward, my role as honorary council will be to give my all to maintain the strength and the links between our, our two countries. Because the reality is, as our Barbadian prime minister would say, many hands make light work. And we need each other. I'm appreci, I'm extremely appreciative of this. of this designation. And I want to extend an invitation to anyone willing to discuss how we can collaborate to help Dominica and Barbados and most of all, help Dominica in its rebuilding effort. Before I end, I must say, I must extend heartfelt gratitude to one of the people who thought them the event would not be possible, Mr. Ishmael Banner for providing the, the food stuff tonight. Again, I want to thank all present tonight for attending. And I'm looking forward to seeing you again, whether in Barbados or in Dominica. In the meanwhile, please do not hesitate to interact with each other and have a good night. We still have some food and refreshments, so feel free to continue to participate and have a safe night home. Thank you.
Well, all that is left to be done is to wrap it up and thank Calvin. Congratulate him first of all for his appointment by Prime Minister Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt. And then to thank him for his vote of thanks. And as he said, there are some refreshments that we would want to invite you to, to have. So drive home, we can still interact, but drive home safely at the end of everything. But officially, that's it. Thank you very much.